October 25th, 2021. I'm Susan Riddickio. I serve as Chair. With me tonight are my colleagues Mariano Colibough, Mike Bettencourt, Rich Mucci, and our Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph and Town Council Nina MacCarries. So we have a very tight agenda. We have a lot to do today. So why don't we go straight to the acceptance of donations, please?
I move that we accept a donation of $45 from James Stilly to be used towards the purchase of a footbrush at the Pacorales Tennis Courts.
There's second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And that brings us to the Town Managers' Report. Beth, are you ready for that?
I am, yes. Also, with the appointment,
Okay.
so in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration, Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941, as amended, I have made the following conditional full-time appointment in the Police Department to Eugene Johnson, Derry, New Hampshire, as civilian dispatcher. I respectfully request that the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period. Thank you.
So I move that we waive the customary 15-day appointment period for Eugene Johnson, civilian dispatcher in the Police Department.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Great, thank you. So I'm just going to share my screen and show my report, if you would allow that. Thank you. Okay, so the first few items here are actually business items for further on the agenda, so I'll skip through those. Town meeting, Town Meeting starts next Monday at 7:00 PM, and subsequent sessions are on the 4th, 8th, and 15th of needed. I just want to highlight for everybody that the Town Managers' Hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. So I hope everybody can attend and Town Meeting members can attend to answer any questions they might have on the articles. A couple of other things I wanted to highlight. The Affordable Housing Trust met on Wednesday, October 20th. That was only the second meeting of that group, and so as part of the meeting, we elected a Chair and Vice Chair. So Marty Jones was elected Chair and Carrie Sue Barney was elected Vice Chair. The group unanimously voted to support the Select Board's article regarding the Washington Swan Street property for the Affordable Housing purposes that will be on the full-time meeting. And their next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 8th at 5:00 PM, if anybody else is interested in joining. Another kind of critical update is we kicked off the budget season last Friday. We had our first budget summit with members of the Select Board, FinCom, School Committee, and Senior Management. So those are meetings we're going to continue to have for the next few months as we work through the FY '23 budget. Next meetings are scheduled for Friday, November 19th, and Friday, the meeting after that will be Friday, December 10th. Construction updates, not a lot of new information to add here. The Morocco School of Boilers have arrived, which is excellent, so they can actually get started on installation. One boiler will be able to be operational at all times during construction, so the heat in the building will not be impacted. And then EverSource has been continuing their work on the 345 line on Washington Street between Sunset Road and Forest Street. There'll be detours on and off in that area through mid-November. Next piece I just wanted to highlight is the MSBA and the town have met to select an architectural engineering firm for the Lynch School feasibility study. We hope to have that team under contract early next week. And the school department is formally kicking off the project on Tuesday, November 16th, with a session in which community members are invited to learn about the project team, the MSBA process, and the timeline for the schematic design development process. So that meeting is at 9:00 AM on Town Hall Auditorium, and there'll be another evening event at Winchester High School Auditorium. And I'm sure that would be more information on the town's website as we get closer to that date. COVID-related updates, there's the next COVID testing clinic is scheduled for Monday, November 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And that you can register on the town's website for that. That's hosted by our Board of Health. The Board of Health is also holding two general public flu clinics, so Monday, October 25th, and Tuesday, November 16th. And then finally, just a couple of community updates that I wanted to note. The Winchester Family Area Network is hosting a Halloween trunk or treat event on Saturday, October 30th, at the Vincent Owen School. This is kind of replacing the Halloween Horribles Parade that we've had in past years downtown. And then most exciting, the Girl Scouts are offering a baked goods delivery for the first night of Town Meeting. So any Town Meeting members who want to get cookies delivered to your house on Monday before Town Meeting, this is a great opportunity. And orders need to be done by this Friday. I think that's all I had to share for the moment. The rest of it will come through other items on the boards.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the Town Manager? I guess I don't see any. I just want to, this seems like a good time in the agenda to do this. I've been asked by Barbara O'Connell of the BFW Post 3719 to be sure and announce that the public, so the public can be aware that the full-blown Veterans Day Parade and civic observance will be held Thursday, November 11th, and that the parade will assemble at the Jenks Parking Lot at 10:15 and step off at 10:30. They will loop around downtown and pause at the memorial at the Lincoln School to lay a wreath. And then they will, the parade will march back through the Rotary and then to the Edward F. O'Connell Memorial Plaza at Town Hall, where the civic exercises will take place. So some speeches, music by the school bands and so forth. So we look forward to everyone coming up for that on the 11th of Veterans Day. So we are looking ahead to having a hearing at 7:45. I don't want to do anything terribly long, but I would mention that we're going to have regular shortened sessions of Select Board, Select Board meetings before all the sessions of Town Meeting. And then we're tentatively scheduling a normal-length Select Board meeting on Thursday, November 18th. And also, we have it slated for that Monday, the 15th, if Town Meeting has wrapped up by then. So. I guess we have five minutes for public comment. If anyone is here for public comment, but we only have five minutes. So please make your comments short and so that other people will be able to speak. And if you have, if you have the same comment as a bunch of other people, please appoint a spokesperson in the interest of time. Is anyone here for public comment? You are, you can raise your Zoom hand and we'll elevate you so you can speak. Anyone here for public comment? All right, so I guess seeing none. Glad everybody, I see there are a lot of participants and watching. Thank you for coming.
Susan, do we want to take the first order of business since there's no change in the districts? That is probably a quick vote.
We could try that. Yep. Is Mary Ellen here? I see Mary Ellen on the list. Maybe we could elevate her, please?
She is. I just did.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary Ellen, for joining us.
Hi, how's everyone? Yes, good evening. This is a quick vote, Mariano, so thank you. If you have taken a look at what was in your packet, we had the 2020 census done with the federal census numbers. They came in. And although Winchester's population has grown roughly 1,596 residents in growth since 10 years ago, we are still below the threshold of targeted populations per our eight precincts. So what that means for Winchester is that precincts 1 through 8, for your typical local elections, who you elect for your precinct membership will not be affected by the 2020 census. So what we gave you in the packet was just simply sort of an overview of what I just said. And then there was the map, which is exactly the same. The only thing that we're doing is changing the dates and certifying it with an official vote of the Select Board as the legislative body, which is required under Massachusetts General Statute for precinct redistricting. So, oh, thank you, Patty. So essentially, I have a motion that I can read to you. It is simply moved and seconded that the Select Board vote to accept the 2020 re-presincting plan, including the voting map that Patty just showed, along with the written precinct boundary descriptions of the town of Winchester. So if you folks want to discuss or you have any questions, I can talk a little bit about state redistricting if you'd like, if you had time. Otherwise, we can save it for another day.
Well, we do have a couple of minutes. Should we go ahead and vote on this thing, on the precinct maps first and get that squared away?
Yeah, I mean, it is pretty much a formal, formal request.
So I move that the Select Board vote to accept the 2020 re-presincting plan, including the voting map and legal written precinct boundary descriptions for the town of Winchester.
Second.
So we have to have a roll call vote? Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Great, thank you. I will mention two quick things. The State Senate and the State Representative Precinct Boundaries have changed across the Commonwealth. Winchester is being affected on the state level for our representative district. So right now, Michael Day represents the 31st Middlesex District, and all of our eight precincts are included in that census tract. So we have only always had one person on our ballot. However, population has shifted significantly enough in the boundaries of the towns surrounding Winchester that we do need to take Precinct 6, which is on the west side of town, on the Lexington side. If you live in Precinct 6, when you go to the polls, you will go ahead and pass your vote for a state representative in the 15th Middlesex District. So I will be communicating all that once the state votes their maps at the state level. They're essentially going to do exactly what you folks just did tonight on the state level in the next week or two. So we'll be announcing that, and I will be notifying all the people in Precinct 6 so that they're aware of that change. And the State Senate, which for Winchester in 2010, we grew enough that the State Senate was split between 2 and 5. You have Pat Jalen and you have Senator Lewis, Jason Lewis. That did not change. So Winchester already had an effect 10 years ago, and we're still holding strong on those population numbers. Does that kind of help a little bit?
Yeah, it's good to hear you explain it, say it out loud. Does this mean there's a new district, a new representative to be elected, or is just redistributing precincts around with the existing number of?
Correct. It's just a redistribution of the population, and it's basically based on the growth and what kind of redevelopment's going on in different communities throughout the Commonwealth. We do, when we look towards 2030, and we look towards the redevelopment that's on the master plan and all of the housing programs that you folks are looking to do, when we get to 2030, Winchester will most likely need to do some serious consideration on splitting our precincts at that time because we're going to be over the targeted 3,015 residents per precinct, by my estimations anyway. So I think hopefully I'll still be around for your 2030 census, and I can walk you through that.
Thank you. Anybody have any quick questions?
What is the population of Winchester right now, Mary Ellen?
It has grown to 22,970. And I'm very proud to say that all of the staff in the Clerk's Office, we worked really hard on the census, which happens every year in the Commonwealth. You remember filling those out every January. And our census on the local level was only off by 110 residents compared to the federal census. So it's really great for us to know that the grants you're filing for, the, you know, housing, the elderly programming, all of it is, we're getting our applications in with real authentic numbers, which I'm really proud of.
Thank you.
Great, John, to the Clerk's Office.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for suggesting that. This only happens occasionally, so I didn't know how long it would take. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I might just hang around and listen a little bit. So is that okay? Somebody will take me off panelist?
Yes, I'll do it.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
All right, so we're ready, are we ready for the hearing, the traffic hearing?
Sure. Yep. I'm just going to quickly share my screen here. Okay, so the Town Manager's Office received a request back in 2020 from a resident at 10 Kendall Street. They noted that Kendall Street is very narrow. The house is located, is my, located right here. This is the Mount Vernon House on the corner of Mount Vernon Street and Kendall Street, just for proximity. So the residents of 10 Kendall Street noted that the street is very narrow, which makes entering and exiting their driveway very difficult when there's a vehicle parked across the street. And they requested a no parking or do not block driveway sign to be installed on the street directly in front of their driveway. So you can see it's a little light in this drawing, but you can see this is their driveway right here. And there are, there's another driveway directly adjacent to theirs on the same side of the street. And this is the area in front of number nine, but they would be requesting no parking signage. So this is just a Google Earth image of the house, so number 10 is right here, and this is actually their driveway. This is the larger driveway that we saw adjacent to it for the house next door. And the area on the left-hand side in front of the yellow house, which is number nine, is the area where they would be looking to install some no parking signage. The Traffic Advisory, the Traffic Review Committee reviewed this proposal and supported the installation of no parking signage in front of number nine to allow safer access in and out of their driveway. Happy to take any questions. I believe the person who submitted the request is also here, if the board wanted to speak with them. We did notify residents on the street as well, if there is any comment from the neighborhood.
Right, is Mr. Memorial here?
He is.
Mike, I think you're muted. Thank you for coming.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, and there's some kind of feedback going on, so we hope we can fix that. Because we're happy to have you here to answer any questions. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry about that. Thank you guys again for taking up the request for a no parking sign. Yeah, this is, you know, it's very much something that we deal with on a daily basis. But just to clarify, the request is actually for the other driveway. So we own both driveways, and it's really, you know, that one there isn't that much of an issue because of the ability to get in and out. You know, it's on the opposite side. Yeah, if we can pull it up, I think that would be helpful. Yeah, so it's really, if you're looking at, it's to the left of the 10, the number 10, it's that driveway there. And so really, in that instance, when someone's parked directly across the street, like, it's pretty much impossible to get out of the driveway. And it's not so much a matter of convenience, it's kind of more of a safety thing, like you literally can't get out of the driveway. The one to the right of the number 10 isn't so much of an issue because of all the other driveways. Like, you're able to kind of, you know, work your way around it. Completely understand it's a narrow street, it's, you know, probably one of the older ones in town. But it's in the instance where somebody's parked to the left of number 10 that it just kind of becomes impossible to get out of the driveway.
Sorry, so the image that we have doesn't show a second driveway, but it's, what are you saying, it's like right here, but so basically they don't park it?
Yeah, exactly.
Number seven.
That's right, yep. Yeah, and Julie Brodeur and I, who's in number seven, connected also. And so, you know, understanding that she has guests that want, like, you know, have to park because she has a shared driveway. So, you know, the ask is not to have no parking on, like, the whole side of the front of her house. It's truly like just in front of our driveway to the left of the number 10.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
I guess I have a question.
Yep.
Beth, and to the petitioner, is this going to create a slippery slope on this road? You know, it's a narrow street, there appears to be driveways on either side. Is this going to lead to other people coming and asking for no parking, you know, in front of their driveways and stuff? I mean, are we worried about that? I mean, I'm just looking at the street. It's very narrow. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the concern, but I don't think it will. Because if you look at all the other driveways, there's a driveway opposite to theirs, so you're able to kind of get in and out. And it prevents other people, like, you obviously can't park in front of a driveway. So that helps kind of mitigate that issue, but also our close proximity to the the Mount Vernon House just means there's just a lot more traffic, like, people want to come visit their loved ones, which completely understand. It's, you know, it's just part of living here, I get that, but that shouldn't kind of preclude us from being able to get in and out of our driveway. So like, I don't really think, just given the layout of all the other driveways, you're, there's going to be a bunch of other petitions for this. And it kind of just comes down, it really is like truly impossible to get in and out without, like, driving all over my lawn to get out of the driveway. And it's a very small section that we're looking to have the no parking sign. Again, like, I don't want to block off Julie's entire front of her, of her, of her house with no parking. It's just kind of, and unfortunately, this doesn't really do it justice, but it's from really the end of our driveway to the end of hers, going from right to left on that number 10 side.
Well, I would just kind of second that, yes, it is a very narrow street, and I can see how you would have that dilemma. You know, my street is wider, but depending on how many cars are parked along my side and, you know, opposite my driveway, it can become really tricky. So I can see your concern.
Yeah, and the other issue to note is, which doesn't really count, it can just mess up. On my, 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 so if you're looking at 10, 11, there's a utility hole there. So it's just, you're pretty much wedged in between, yeah, okay, so this is like, so you can kind of keep going down, Kendall towards Mount Vernon, Vernon, there's a utility hole on my side, which makes kind of the turning radius easier to drive around.
This isn't a live Google image, I just took a photo of it, so I can't walk down the street. That, I think it's right here. Correct, what you're talking about.
Yeah, exactly. That's right, that's right.
It seems to me the Traffic Review Committee made a recommendation to support the installation of the no parking signage. So they probably looked at it in depth there. So I would move that we support the Traffic Review Committee recommendation to install a no parking sign at 10 Kendall Street as presented in the memo from the Town Manager, Acting Town Manager.
Well, before we vote, I just wanted to open it up to other members of the public, if they're here for the hearing. Sorry, Mike. If you're here to speak on this traffic hearing, you would raise your Zoom hand and we'll let you speak. But I'm not seeing any, so why don't we move on? And just heard a vote, I heard a motion, so.
So can we close the public hearing? I have a, I'm in the motion.
Close the hearing.
And there's a lot of feedback.
Mike, would you mind muting? Because we're getting a lot of feedback.
So I would like to amend that motion that rather than as presented, that the no parking sign be installed opposite of the driveway on the south part of the property and not the driveway on the north part of the property at 10 Kendall, which is what was requested by the resident just now.
Yes.
Second.
If that's what the resident, is that what's being requested? I don't know.
Are we clear?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's the closest amount to remember.
Okay, I'll second.
Do we need a roll call vote? Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Well, thank you for coming in. So let's move on to the Waterfield Lot. Just to kind of set the stage on this, as most of you, most of you know, this project went through a public process for a request for qualifications. And we got a number of qualified developers and then choosing among them, that we then issued a request for proposals for the project itself. We got a number of proposals. We had a set of public, a public interview session. We asked questions and voted to designate Civicco as the person to negotiate with, the proponent to negotiate with. We also pointed an alternate, which was the Penrose Proposal. Negotiated a land disposition agreement or a land development agreement. And that was approved by two-thirds of Town Meeting. There was a referendum election where the Civicco LDA was not approved. It was a very narrow vote. We then convened and discussed and appointed a task force of five community members to give us recommendations and also to work with a financial analyst, an independent financial consultant, who would help us understand the finances of this fairly narrow, not unique, but narrow type of real estate development that is dependent on some state affordable housing subsidies. And the task force then voted on a number of recommendations. And so we have convened here, we heard their report, we studied it, or the reports. A lot of good thinking in there, but a lot of different points of view. And so tonight, we're going to discuss amongst ourselves and decide whether to proceed with renegotiating with Civicco or what we would like to do. So I guess the first thing would be to recognize that we have Town Council here, if we have questions on anything for Town Council to address. And I would ask maybe Rich to start off, because he has been asking a lot of questions and was one of the people who really did not support the Civicco at Town Meeting, and I think probably has the most questions right now. So you want to go ahead?
I do have a lot of questions. I guess, is Lynn Sweet gone? I mean, that was the only availability.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ask her, because, you know, we probably had about seven minutes to ask her questions out of a six-week-long project, and I had at least five more questions for her, so.
Oh, okay.
So I guess that's my first, my first question. And I still have a lot of questions. I mean, I think this is. And I still have a lot of questions. I mean, I think this has been a good process, um, you know, and, and I think there's been a lot of good discussions and a lot of good ideas that have come out of it, as you said, so, um, I think we're making progress. You know, I'm curious what my colleagues think and where they are at this point in time. You know, and I, and I do have still additional questions for Lynn.
Okay. I mean, well, I, I've been, uh, I supported this proposal, um, during the referendum. I feel at this point that we have, you know, I'm glad we went through this process with the, the task force and with Lynn. I think we all learned a lot more about the financial aspects of it. I think going into this, we realize, we recognized that the main issues during the, the discussions before the referendum, focused on the, the financial aspect and revenue to the town and also on parking. Because we all know that parking is, um, you know, a, just a critical component of a, a vibrant downtown. We want to help our town, our downtown businesses survive the pandemic and also stay in business during the MBTA station. Renovation project, that's going to be a tough time. We recognize that parking is a critical component. Adequate parking is really important. And having, you know, watched or, or viewed on, uh, you know, on Wind Cam, the, the, task force meetings and studied all of their, you know, clever and intricate ideas. I, I really think we have a lot of information to go on. I think a lot of this stuff is, um, are issues that we can negotiate with Civico. I don't see the need to go out for another RFP or to go out for, um, look for, uh, different projects. I think the, um, Civico folks have, you know, they did present a, a, a very well-designed and, um, responsive project that kind of meets all of our qualifications, all our, our, our needs, you know? And I think that they're clearly highly motivated to do this project for us. And so I, I think, I'm thinking that we maybe, you know, should certainly accept and, and, um, agree with the task force on their things that they list as recommendations of things to discuss and, and try to negotiate with Civico. And I think that that, that way we can make a lot of progress and actually have this thing be built. And we'll go out on a limb and say it's a lot easier to criticize or second guess things than it is to actually get things done. And our town really does need to add to its stock of affordable housing. Town has had multiple chances to do this over the years. And, um, this, you know, is kind of an ideal spot for transit oriented affordable housing. And I think we should move ahead and negotiate with Civico. But that's, 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 that's where I come out, you know, but I'm trying to keep an open mind and listen to everybody else.
So, um, yeah, Susan, I think, you know, I, I want to thank everybody who was spent all that time in the, uh, in the task force. All, all volunteer time. Um, I think, you know, we had a vote that was very close. It was like, I think a difference of like 70 something votes, if that. And we brought this task force to, with people from, you know, three people from the no side and two people from the yes side to see if, um, i- if they could, you know, reach an agreement. And I think there's, there's, uh, in the report, they reached several recommendations unanimously. And so I think we should follow the fact that they were able to, you know, bring people from the no side and the yes side. And they were able to come up with unanimous recommendations on how we should, uh, negotiate with Civico to, to, um, to make the proposal a little bit more palatable to both sides. I, I think we should follow those recommendations that they, uh, that they reach unanimously. So there's, there's a lot of good things here. Uh, there's technical things that they did with, uh, the help of Lynn Sweet, including, you know, the, uh, eighty percent AMI units being sixty percent AMI units to be able to get different sources of financing. So maybe we get a little bit of, um, uh, better, um, uh, a better financing there. I don't like the idea of removing, uh, retail commercial spaces, uh, on a, on a, on a main street such as that. But it's a unanimous recommendation, so I'm, I'm willing to, um, you know, I'm willing to accept that recommendation and use that as a, you know, for negotiating and, uh, and maybe get some more, uh, parking spots out of that. So, um, yeah, I think we should follow the unanimous recommendations of the task force and negotiate with Civico using those.
Mike, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Susan. Uh, you know, I, I think we're all, uh, you know, somewhat on the same page here and, um, certainly want to echo what, um, my colleagues have said and thanking the task force and our staff. I mean, uh, this was really an elevated level of engagement from our staff over a long period of time. So, um, I know Beth and Brian's at Kelly Town Manager's Office, uh, Planning Office has really been, um, fully engaged. So, uh, so we appreciate that effort. And, um, as Mariano said, I think that, uh, we did make progress and we do have some targets, uh, to negotiate, uh, with Civico. That doesn't mean that our negotiations with Civico, uh, are going to be one hundred six, one hundred percent successful and, um, and, and really, um, reach what, where, where we need to go. But, um, I, I think it's worthwhile to try, as Susan said, that, you know, this was been, it's been a long process. I mean, this really started before my time on the board. Years ago, uh, the, one of the motivations was vibrancy in the town center and, uh, increasing foot traffic. So, um, it, it, it wasn't, housing was one of the vehicles to make that happen, um, but also supporting businesses. And having them have the ability to thrive was one of the focuses. So I, I see the parking issue as a really significant one. It's not just a place for cars. Uh, it's a, creating the capacity and the ability for, um, our, um, our residents to, uh, patronize the stores and for our businesses to be successful. So, um, I know sometimes we just, everything looks like a parking space and we say, everybody feels entitled to park in front of the store where they want to go into. But I think maintaining overall parking capacity in the town center. What I've been hearing especially more recently from individual, uh, shop owners that, um, with the MBTA construction and this project coming out of, uh, a, a really tough pandemic, um, it, it's, it's clearly a priority for us. So, um, I, I think that there's some creative solutions to some of these issues that we've seen over the period of time. And, um, it may be that we go back to the drawing board. You know, i- if things with Civico don't work out or things with Penrose don't work out, or we want to go in a, uh, new direction. But from my perspective, it's worthwhile to, uh, a- at least sit down with Civico. I know they've been very, uh, engaged in our, uh, public process with the task force. So, um, I think, um, they have an idea of, of where things at, are at. So we don't have to spend, you know, months and months negotiating. So, um, you know, I look forward to, um, discussing some possibilities there with them. And the other piece is, you know, I, I reviewed all the other proposals, um, this weekend too. And just to get a sense of, um, you know, they, they were all pretty close and they weren't far off. Some of the buildings were higher, some offered more or less parking spaces, different units. Removing of the Chamber of Commerce building, not having the Gate House building. Both Penrose that and, uh, Civico, uh, were very different in their look where, um, so I think, you know, for what the town is looking for, I, I think there's a lot of room for us to make some change. And it's just a question, um, for us to work with council to see what the, um, the guidelines to that negotiation, you know, can, can look like without having us hit any legal tripwires from the procurement process. So, um, it's, it's a tough time for us to start another process as we're going into a, a very busy town meeting for this select board. But, um, you know, with a little patience and a little engagement with Civico, I'm sure that we can, um, come out with, uh, with something that satisfies the recommendations of the task force and is respectful to that process.
I'm, I'm glad you, you, you said that. I, we, I, I really, I meant what I said when I, you know, said I was glad we went through this because we all learned a lot. And I re- I really am very grateful to the, the folks who are on that, that task force. There's a lot, they put a lot of time and effort, clearly a lot of time and effort into it. Beth, I mean, you've, you've been watching this and, and involved, you know, um, to kind of land the plane with the, with the task force. Just wondering if you had any thoughts that you might want to share or recommendations? And if not, that's fine too, but just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, this is a decision for the board to make in the direction you want to go. I would just, um, mention if we are trying to head towards a December, um, special, uh, meeting that we should take a look back at the, um, dates that Mariano gave us a few weeks ago in terms of timelines. So, um, I don't know if that's, if we're headed in that direction, you know, we have till mid-November to get, uh, a warrant mailed out. But you just keep that in mind as we, um, as we go forward.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, um, if we got this far, you know, that maybe we should, um, defer voting on that tonight? And sort of figure out our schedules, because that's part of getting, getting together with Civico is to really understand what the schedule's going to be. But yes, that's a very good point. We do have, you have to give people notice ahead of time.
Susan, I think there's a, uh, hand raised to, from the audience, um, just off.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not seeing who that is.
I think it's Artie. Um, it's at the top of the list. There we go.
Oh, he is at the top of the list. Okay, thank you. So Mr. Benos, I, you know, I'll recognize, I'll recognize you to speak.
Yes, I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Okay.
Thank you so much for all the work that the select board has done on this very, very difficult and trying project. And one quick comment as a, as a business owner. The comment I heard that the referendum vote was close. Yes, it was close. However, what do you say to the minority businesses? The women, the businesses owned by women in, in the center that were not able to vote because they were not residents of the town? The people most affected by this are the, are, are unable to vote. I mean, that astounds me. What do we, what do you say to, to somebody like Holly who owns the nail salon? Who doesn't live in town, has not been able to vote, whose business has been affected by this and livelihood has been affected? At the end of the day, our elected officials, our town officials, at the end of the week, they get their paycheck guaranteed. We, our paycheck is not guaranteed. And again, what do you say to these people that weren't allowed to vote simply because they're not residents of the town?
Thank you, Artie. We're getting, we're getting some feedback or somebody's television coming through. Um, anyone else? Would like to speak? All right.
If I could just go back for a second?
Yes, please.
So, I, I, I guess I'll, I'll try to reach out to Lynn Sweet.
Yeah.
Um, going forward. Um, but, but in our brief conversation, so it's my understanding, if, if I heard her correctly, which is one of my questions was, um, most, even if we were to put out a new RFP at this point, most developers are tied up now until January with funding, um, being offered by the, the, by the, by the state. And you're not going to get a response, um, from, you know, most people would be your guests because of that situation. So, um, you know, they're preoccupied at this point. So, um, you know, I, I don't, I mean, clearly there's the votes here to, to, to speak with Civico again. You know, I don't have a problem with speaking with Civico again. But I will say, uh, in, in my opinion, this, this project does need to change. And I think the task force has, has guided us in a good direction with negotiations. And I think, um, you know, the priorities are, are a little clearer and the information is clearer now that we have, um, uh, gone through this process. So, uh, certainly, you know, given the fact that, you know, no RFP would draw a response at this point, I don't see any harm in, in, in talking with Civico. So, uh, so I would support what my colleagues are saying, at least preliminarily having some discussions with Civico. But I, I will indicate to all of you right now, um, if my support is to be garnered for this project, the parking will have to be addressed, um, mostly. And, um, secondarily, you know, if we can increase the income to the town, great. Uh, and, and follow the recommendations of the task force to lead us in those negotiations. But, um, my support will not be there, um, if we don't do something about the parking, either with this project or a contemporaneous project, but we can't lose that much parking. You know, I, I think I've learned a lot in the last, you know, four or five months, um, in going through this process and, and meeting with our merchants and, and understanding, um, the makeup of the town and where we're headed. So, um, I just want to make that clear, um, as we can move forward.
All right. Um, I, I would also note that we anticipated that, um, if we did go in this direction, that Lynn Sweet could, um, work with us, to run numbers, to advise us. And, uh, so, you know, she would, she's not, you know, she's not removed herself or we haven't removed her from the process. And I'm, I'm sorry that you had more questions. And I guess it wasn't clear that, you know, she was invited to stay later than that, um, earlier executive session that we had. But she, she's still involved and I, I think she's, she's adding a lot of value. So. She will continue to be involved. So is there any more discussion? Should we, um, should we vote to proceed with, with Civico? Uh, that's my sense of the, the, my sense of the room, the virtual room.
I mean, I think given that Civico was the proposal that already proposed the most parking of any of the responses to the RFP that we did. And if parking seems to be the number one concern, then I think we should continue negotiating with Civico.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, one concern and it's why I moved forward, um, to Penrose, um, way back when and as a, a fallback, um, project, you know, was, was that Civico hasn't, um, said or really guaranteed that they're going to be able to provide that parking. So, um, you know, that, that is a concern with me. I really agree with Rich that this is the, um, kind of moving part that needs to be, um, realized as part of a, um, a new negotiation. So, uh, you know, I look forward to sitting down with all of us and Civico. I, I think, um, uh, having, uh, Lynn answer some questions in advance, um, from all of us to the degree that we have them, uh, is helpful. I think maybe for our, our first meeting with Civico, uh, maybe it's just the four of us and, and them. I know Lynn has, is, feels very strongly about, um, a- as she expressed to us, that many of the task force recommendations are, are not realistic. So I don't want to start off a negotiation that, like that. So, um, I'm happy to, um, move forward and, uh, sit down with Civico on multiple occasions to try to get us where we need to go.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to say that Lynn was going to be in the room all the time, but she's going to be a resource for us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I share Mike's concern, you know, the, and, and that was one of my questions for Lynn. You know, during the task force meetings, there was, you know, talk of this public parking. But, you know, there's been no guarantee from Civico, um, certainly that they would, they would build that. And, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's number one on my list. You know, what, what can they guarantee about that public parking?
Well, I would, you know, this is a, this is, they're building a new building there. Like any building project, there are uncertainties about the site. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't negotiate some sort of, you know, if it turns out the, the parking can't be built underground, some alternative or a payment or, you know, this is, these are things that we could, we could discuss.
Yeah, I think.
I get it. I get it.
I thought it was $2.8 million that they were planning on spending on that parking garage that, I mean, could go to, to the. that, I mean, could go to, to the town to build a parking deck somewhere else or to fund a, some sort of public transport system like Lexpress has to bring people to the town center. In addition to the, you know, 60 families that will be living within walking distance of all of the town center businesses, we could fund a shuttle system to bring people and that would alleviate parking. So I think there's, I think we have a lot of options moving forward with Civico.
Yeah, I mean, not to get into the weeds on this, Mariano, but to, to listen to you with those suggestions, which, you know, in addition to increasing parking or not having a net loss of parking would be great. But I think out of this project, the town can't have a net loss of parking. And if it's at a different location, so be it. We can discuss that as long as it's a contemporaneous project. But, you know, we, we can't have a net loss of parking. I don't even think there's enough parking in that area. I mean, we got a memo today from someone who worked at the Boston Redevelopment Authority that I thought raised some good points about, you know, people living in that area and, and the congestion. So certainly, you know, I think that's a number one concern for me.
So, I mean, the only hard data we have right now, and I know it's from 10 years ago, but the only data we have right now is that at peak parking usage, 47% of all parking spots are empty. Right? And we're redoing that parking study now. So we will see what hard data we have. But, you know, I know everybody complains about parking and the weather, right? But the data that we have is that 47% of all parking spots are empty. So if you're saying we have to spend millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars, or in this case, $2.8 million that could go to provide other services for the town that would alleviate the taxpayers and we have to spend it so that instead of 47% empty, we have 53% empty at all times, then that's, that's your red line. I get it. But I think these are things that, you know, we need to consider as we move forward.
Yeah, and you keep quoting that study, but that was done before any major restaurant opened up in this town, before Black Horse Tavern was open or anything like that. So I think it's out of date to keep quoting that study. And in the current study that we, right now.
It's the most current study we have.
I would, I would also say, and maybe Beth was going to say this, that, you know, that study covered a much larger area than just the downtown, the inner downtown. And that the parking work that we're doing now with school is not replicating that large study from 2010.
Right, so the, the tool study is a parking management study. There's no utilization data being collected.
The new one.
So that parking, including commuting parking, which again, if, if there's empty commuter spots at Wedgmead, right, we can limit how many commuter parking passes we give at Abregona and open that up for town, for, for people who, who go to the town center for the businesses, right? So there's, I understand that not all of the parking spots are within one block of the businesses, but if there's empty parking spots near the train station, then we can reduce the number of commuter parking at the Abregona and move them closer to the other train station.
And I was going to add that due to the pandemic, we have stopped enforcing or selling passes, you know, the, for that Abregona, lower Abregona lot, you know, that's all open now for public parking. And, and we can, and we can revisit how we, what the permit program is and what we charge. And, you know, when we have an opportunity to have some data and since we have this inconvenience of the pandemic and people not commuting as much as they were, they seem to be headed back. So I, I, you know, I think there's a lot to work with here.
Yeah, I mean, I just think the housing that we're putting in, you know, with, with the Fells project, there was a presentation at five tonight for the chamber on the, on the 10 Converse Place. And the, and this project, you know, the amount of units you're putting in, I think, you know, the, the goal is 250 units downtown. You know, we, we can't, you know, and, and the parking you're putting in is, you know, 60 units at 10 Converse Place, they're talking 30 parking spots, you know? The ratio is just, you know, we can't lose parking. I'm not asking to increase parking. I mean, that would be great if we could. But, you know, we, we definitely certainly can't lose parking at this point. And Mariano, I, I know you, 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 you're steadfast in your beliefs and, and I'm steadfast in mine. So I'm happy to, to have housing downtown if we build the infrastructure, which I think is our responsibility to be able to handle it.
Yeah, I mean, I think housing downtown will help the businesses more than anything else. I think 250 families that are within walking distance of all those businesses, I mean, I can just imagine how many people are going to walk over when they are 50 feet from D'Agostino's, when you have 60 families within there are just going to be able to walk in there. Or from any of the other businesses in the town center are going to be immensely helped by the fact that there's people downtown. And that happens in every other town and city that redevelops and that brings people to live in the central business district. You see a revitalization versus keeping commercial and residential separate.
I, I think both things, you know, can be true. And I think that's, you know, why I look forward to sitting down with Civico, looking through the proposals, you know, referencing prior projects of all the applicants. This was one of the biggest issues that they dealt with in other communities. And a lot of the ways that they dealt with it is, just was very creative. And some of it was off-site by close by and investing in different parking solutions. So at, at least we know from all of the applicants that were involved in the RFP process that they're all highly qualified and have really put together creative solutions for this lot. So I look forward to, to sitting down with them and solving it. But yeah, you know, the, the, have the increasing residents in downtown is definitely a priority as well as maintaining the parking level. So hopefully we can, we, we can make it all work.
So is anybody ready with a motion?
Do we need?
Well, actually, I was going to ask Mina if he had any thoughts or recommendations about how to, how to pose what we want to do here, you know? How to, what, what is, what is the, what is the motion, if you don't mind?
It's really up to you whether you need any motion at all, frankly, Susan. You have already selected Civico a long time ago. I, I don't think there's any doubt from the minutes that will be produced from this, there's a consensus to follow the task force's recommendations as the guidepost for, for your future negotiations with Civico. And from what I hear, there's a consensus to also continue negotiating with Civico at the moment to see where that leads. So I, I don't think you need another vote.
Okay.
If, if others would feel, if the other members would feel comfortable to vote, I think it could be as simple as to continue negotiations with Civico guided by the task force's recommendations presented to the board, something that simple.
Go ahead, Rich.
I was just going to ask, and I guess what, I, I guess, when do we shift course? I mean, how do we, how do we make that decision? Do we review this at a, a meeting? Like what, I mean, we, we already, I think in July, we, we voted that way. So I don't know if we need to vote again. I just, I'd like to know when, when do we, when do we shift course and how do we address that?
So you're, you're asking, you know, we go back to get together with Civico and maybe you want to set some kind of metric for when we would, you know, have an agreement or not, that sort of thing?
Or just a process for us to discuss, you know, and be able to vote on moving on from Civico if those discussions don't prove fruitful.
I think we can just keep the topic on the agenda. And if at any time somebody wants to make a motion, we can take a vote on it if, if we want to stop negotiating. But, you know, just in our regular meetings.
I mean, I think we don't really have a sense of that now. So although we do, it seems, have a consensus that we do want to go ahead. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Just to draw your attention, I think Diab and Ms. Hughes are, have hands raised in the.
Oh.
So if you want to elevate anyone for comments.
All right, I, I'll, I'll recognize these two people. And I think we're, we're wrapping up, so that will be the last speakers. So Patty, if you could elevate, I don't know why I'm not seeing the names. I just say, says attendees one and I'm, I'm not finding it. So it's, that's my Zoom ignorance.
They're both elevated.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Hughes, why don't you go ahead? You might have to unmute yourself, too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First, I want to thank you all for your service as well as the task force. I know a lot of hours go into this and it's taking time away from family life, personal things. I'm sure you can be doing a lot of other things, so greatly appreciated. That said, I have to say that listening to this discussion tonight, I'm a little bit taken aback by some of the comments and the general tenor. So I guess let me try to go back to the beginning here. The vote that was taken in June was split and more than 50% of the people who came out, which equates to about 25% of the population of, I think I heard earlier, close to 23,000. That's a substantial percentage of the population that is saying that they do not support accepting the LDA that was put forth with Civico. It was a very strong statement from the public. And some of the comments that I heard tonight are implying that there has been unanimous support since then around moving forward with Civico. And I read all of the reports that were put forward by task force members. I listened to as many of the meetings as I could. The ones that I couldn't, I went back and tried to listen to the recordings when they were available. So I think I'm reasonably well-informed on what the positions were of the task force members. And I, I feel compelled to point out that three out of the five members were unanimous in recommending that the, that the Select Board vote not to move forward with Civico, but to stop negotiating with Civico and to reissue the RFP. And that's three out of five of the task force members. So when I drop back 50 feet, and also one other point I wanted to make is, I understand there are two other concerns that were, that I saw documented on the meeting minutes, one of which is a legal concern, that the initial RFP process may not have been legal because it did not specifically require a price in the proposals under the procurement requirements of 30B. And that's a serious question that would potentially open up the town to lawsuits from some of the other vendors at a minimum. That concerns me. I'm a 37-year resident of Winchester, by the way, so I'm not naive to some of the things that have gone on in town and some of the contention that comes up in these things. I appreciate it and I appreciate how difficult this is. But from a citizen's perspective, what I see is that majority of citizens in June voted not to move forward with Civico, number one. I also see that the task force, which was appointed by the Select Board and the town manager to represent the citizens in town, were not unanimous in their views. Three out of five of the members, as I said, voted not to move forward with Civico and to reissue the RFP. So that was by no means unanimous. But what it feels like to me as a citizen is that the Select Board is now ignoring that town vote, ignoring the, the recommendations of the Advisory Board meeting and moving forward with Civico regardless. And I just have to say, that does not feel like a very democratic process to me. And it certainly doesn't feel as if the will of the people is being heard, let alone respected. And the only final comment I would add to that is going back to those reports and to the, what came, what resulted from the task force's requirements. Something that I think is pretty basic here is that the task force voted to reprioritize what they want, what the town wanted to come out of those proposals. And that list was completely changed. Parking obviously moved up to the top of the list, which it hadn't been before. The, the revenue impact on the town was brought into focus as being very important. I would also mention, by the way, that my understanding is that several members of the task force requested to see the financial statements from the, I believe her name is Lynn, from the financial consultant that the Select Board hired. They requested the financials. They were told that those financials, the financial assumptions had been provided by Civico. They were not independent financials that she developed, which I think was certainly my expectation of why she was being brought into the project was to perform an, an objective, independent financial analysis. But in fact, the assumptions were produced by Civico. And when, I believe it was Bill Cummings, requested the financial statements, the spreadsheets from Civico, he was told that she couldn't release them to them. And my understanding is they were never produced to the task force. That's some pretty important information that was withheld from the task force. And I don't know how the task force or the Select Board or anyone else involved in this process could assess the impact of this proposal on the town's financials over 35-year, 50-year, never mind 99-year period without looking at those financials. So with that, I would encourage you not to move forward with Civico, to go back and review some of the, the recommendations that were, were put forward, most notably to reissue the RFP and consider other proposals. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. And Diab, there he is.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a very, very brief clarification about parking requirements for the CBD, in particular 10 Converse Place. The CBD requires that you have 0.75 parking spots per unit. And in particular, 10 Converse Places coming in at one parking spot per unit. So I believe someone made a statement that there would only be of, for, at the 60 units at Town Converse, they would provide 30 parking spots. They're in fact, by one spot per unit. Above is what is required in the CBD. Thank you.
Thank you, Diab Gerius of the Planning Board. So I, I, I have the sense, and I thank the, the two people who just spoke, I have a sense that we do want to continue as a board, at least for now. And that we will, you know, revisit this topic soon because if we want to proceed, we need to do so expeditiously and also allow time for the Finance Committee and town meeting to understand anything, any new agreements that we, that we reach. So I don't think this will, I, I can't foresee this dragging out because either we need to decide and move ahead or decide not to. And I, I think, I think we're, we're capable of deciding that stuff and the timing.
Susan, I, I would just ask that we up Mariano's recommendation that we keep this on the agenda for each meeting so that we can certainly make a motion. If, if negotiations don't go well quickly, that we can pivot to an RFP. If, you know, and, and a board member can make a motion to that extent. I mean, clearly, you know, my colleagues favor, you know, negotiating with Civico to start. You know, I'm happy to, to talk to them first, but I want to have the, the ability to, to have a discussion in public and have it reviewed at each meeting as we go forward.
Don't know, I want it on the agenda each time. I'm not going to commit to talking about it each time because I don't think that's going to make sense. But yes, we should have it on the agenda each time. So shall we move on? And, and we will, we'll have to reconvene and look at our, our calendars and try to figure out the timing. We're scheduling a meeting as, as, as Mike outlined, I think. I think that's the best, you know, that makes sense to move forward that way. So the next item is the annual restaurant and business alcohol license renewals. And I believe that Beth should probably lead us into that.
Sure, happy to. So it's that time of year to, renewal notices will go out later this month for the 2022 alcohol beverage licenses. It's my understanding that last year, the Select Board elected to waive the fees associated with these licenses for the current calendar year due to the impact of COVID-19. It's our recommendation that these fees be in reason stated for 2022. And I've provided a list of the fees that were in place prior to the pandemic for your consideration. All renewal paperwork is due in the town manager's office by the end of November and the Select Board will review and approve the licenses in December. Please note, there are currently two licenses that. Please note there are currently two licenses that we expect to be returned to the town. One is for the spot, which is an all alcoholic restaurant, and pairings, which is a package store license. Both of those facilities closed in twenty twenty-one. Happy to answer any questions?
Anyone have any questions about this process? Any questions about the fees or the idea of instituting the fees? Any thoughts?
Sorry, I got bumped off there for a second, Susan.
Okay, good. I'm glad you're back.
Yeah, sorry about that. So have we, you know, reached out to the chamber or any of the businesses to see how everybody's doing? I know that we that was our initial conversation last year to that we really wanted to make sure everybody was staying afloat and give them a little little bit of a bump if we could. But I'm not where everyone is.
Sorry, so having not been part of the process last year, we did not do that, but I'm happy to do that if you'd like to have that before we move forward the vote.
Yeah, maybe just even reach out to the chamber and see what the sense is for some of the businesses and it could even be something that we we phased back in. You know, I think things are businesses are still struggling and certainly where the pandemic still has an impact and and will through the through the winter, so.
Is this a type of payment where we could structure it where they they pay half in January and half halfway through the year or something? Or is this something that wobble front?
I'm not sure. I don't know, Mina or Mark, if you know the answer to that question?
I don't know if Mark knows of any anything that's been done differently. Typically, these are paid upfront. I do know that some communities gave some relief during the pandemic on when the fees were collected. I think the question that we might have to circle back with Jed Cafarella in the town manager's office is if any of this, if all of this is straight to the town or if any of this is required for A B C C to process any of the paperwork at the state level. If not, then you could make the decision to structure it, I think, in in two separate pieces.
That makes sense, yeah. I I don't. Beth, do you know if this is, any of this is a state?
So I'm looking at, Jen gave me the letter from two thousand nineteen that went out to the beverage licensees. And so in addition to the renewal fee that's shown here, there's a hundred and twenty-five dollar filing fee that's paid, I think, to the town of Winchester. And then a separate check for for the a building inspection fee. So it does not appear that the town receives any additional money from the restaurants for anything that goes to the A B C C, although that filing fee can be separate.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess we're all learning this as we go, so, yeah.
So I guess this, so if they're due to the A B C C, so does the town make that payment on behalf of the restaurants? What?
No, I think, again, yeah, so I mean, this is the license that the town gives.
Okay.
And they have a separate licensing process.
Okay, I think I must I must have misheard you. I'm sorry.
So these are these are town fees, but there are some, there are two other filing fees and something else that that do go to the A B C C?
No, no, so the I think there's a filing fee that comes to town. So this is like a permit fee, right?
Oh, okay.
Again, I'm just looking at the old applications from two thousand nineteen. So it appears that there's the permit fee, which is the number shown here. And then there's a filing fee that comes to the town to process that, which is like an administrative fee that is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then another administrative fee of forty dollars for building inspection. Let's call that on the application from two thousand nineteen.
Okay, all right.
It does say that the person who signs the renewal application for the town must be approved by the A B C C as a licensed manager.
Okay. So you will figure out a way to reach out to the chamber and how things are going, yeah, financially, okay.
So before we just go off this topic, I wanted to mention, never too early to talk about outdoor dining for next year. So it's my understanding, and Mina, you can jump in if I'm misstating, the the COVID extension laws, but it's my understanding that there's a provision that will expire April first, twenty twenty-two, about expanded patio outdoor service through the A B C C. And that in order for businesses to be able to serve outside, like an on-street location in the next in the next year, they must obtain a local and A B C permitting prior to that April first, twenty twenty-two timeframe. And so our concern is that this could be a very time-consuming process for them, especially if there's going to be a lot more licenses going to the A B C C is we need to try to accommodate some additional outdoor dining as we have over the past few years. So we would like to develop a policy for your twenty twenty-two outdoor dining process in the near term so that we can start the application process before the end of this year to make sure that those that folks have approval for those outdoor dining applications before they go to the A B C C with their extension request to serve outdoors. This is obviously is not a discussion, a detailed discussion for tonight's meeting. I'd like to suggest that maybe one or two board members work with me over the next few weeks to develop a policy where we put some kind of boundaries on what we might expect for outdoor dining next year, like number of spaces, you know, timeframe for installation. And then we could bring that back to the board for approval and then come back with a application that that outdoor dining the outdoor dining for the restaurants that we could approve hopefully before the end of this year or in early twenty twenty-two.
I'm happy to work on that.
Great. Anyone, any other volunteers?
Yeah, I'm happy to help too, Beth, to to create its help needed.
That's a good idea. I mean, people love outdoor dining and we certainly want to make it as permanent, you know, make it permanent and and, you know, and also understand and have some parameters around it so that we're not sort of living from year to year. We could nice to have some consistency and and set some expectations around that. Good idea.
Mina, did I misspeak anywhere along there with the A B C requirements?
No, you did not. Everything's extended. It may be extended again, but we have no idea until the governor's office acts again.
Right.
Kind of an odd date that they selected April first.
In this climate, yes.
Yeah.
But whatever. You know, I'm glad you're I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. So we're we're moving a little bit faster than I thought we would. And I think that I told the schools, if, you know, they wanted to be here when we talk about the central office relocation, that it would probably be around nine. So maybe we could go ahead and.
They are actually all here.
Are they all here? Okay.
Yes.
I didn't see everybody earlier. But okay, if they're all here, why don't we just go ahead and do that?
I'll bring them in.
Yeah. I I I'm not expecting a presentation from anyone from the schools. We had that and we sort of didn't have a chance to ask a lot of questions. I think we've digested it now and you know, this is the basis for a an article on the warrant for, I think it's fifty-seven thousand some. Begins with a five, some funding to complete or to do the next stage of the design work for the proposal to renovate the Sanborn Carriage House and relocate the central office there. So I'm happy to have Superintendent Frank Hackett, school committee chair Darren Bollanies, and school committee member Chris Nixon here. Thank you guys for joining us.
Jay Nardone is joining you as well.
Oh, okay. Jay Nardone of the E F P B C. All right.
He's he's already in.
Yep, I see. I see that.
Good evening.
Thanks, Jerry. Jerry, Jay, thanks, Jay. I have a cousin Jerry. I'm sorry, it's Gerald. So why don't we just ask maybe if Frank or Chris could just really briefly update anything we need to know? I don't think there's that much. I know that you're talking about you're still talking about swing space and you're still talking about, you know, getting to the point in your process where you have a designer on board. But you're hearing more about swing space. So maybe if you could just kind of fill us in on that and then we'll ask her.
And we we actually did throw together a brief presentation. We don't have to go through it if you don't like to, given the hour. What I would offer is I I can't believe it's been a month since we actually last met with you all. I'm kind of shaking my head over that. I think it was September twenty-seventh, and here we are on the twenty-fifth. So since we last met with you, we've had two lengthy sessions with the MSBA Designer Selection Panel. And by lengthy, I mean they're over like three or three and a half hours. We interviewed three teams, three different architectural and engineering teams that submitted detailed proposals on the project. We knew just from reading the proposals, as I think we shared with you last month, that everyone was concerned about how tight the site is at Lynch, the chance of the design planning phase and construction challenges that that presents to us. And most of them spoke to the need for some measure of swing space. So in our more recently in meeting with the MSBA and narrowing down those ten to a group of three finalists, we heard that message even more sharply, I would say, than we've heard it before. What was interesting to me, and I would, you know, welcome Frank to speak to this, is that not only did these teams kind of talk about different sort of end game development scenarios about what a new Lynch might look like. And as I think you all know, with feasibility, we have to study both a new build with a teardown. We have to study a gut renovation. We have to study a partial demo and an addition, everything sort of under the sun. That's a requirement of the feasibility process. But what was what sort of struck me, Susan, was that the architects pointed out that aside from the different end games that the team with Winchester might develop, there are different pathways that could be taken to actually get to option A, option B, option C, and so forth. There isn't an option and there isn't a pathway that doesn't require some measure of swing space. I heard very clearly real interest in getting either a kid's corner and rec out of Mystic, which, as we said to you a month ago, we have no, you know, aspirations towards, or to use Parkhurst. So there was real value in that. We we don't have a team on board yet, but we are in the process of negotiation. And perhaps as early as, I think, November sixth or ninth, we may have someone on board. And once we do, we'll announce that and really look forward to introducing the full team to the community at our kickoff on Tuesday, November sixteenth. I'll shut up and let Frank or others speak.
No, I just I would just piggyback on on what Chris has said. I mean, I think we've been talking about this for a while. The site obviously is tight. It'll really be interesting to see what the design team comes up with for possibilities in terms of how the construction would happen, whether it, as Chris said, whether it's a renovation addition or whether it's a strict, straight up new build. But there's no question, and and we are seeing it in the proposals, that a significant amount of swing space is going to be needed. And ideally, in any construction project, we would have, would be able to empty the site altogether, especially in a place, in a site where, you know, you kind of have two roads in, one one in, one out. And just the lay down areas and and construction traffic, parent traffic, bus traffic, there's a lot, there's a lot going on on that site. So, you know, I I I don't think there's any way around the fact that we're going to need swing space. And I think that that's kind of been validated by the proposals that we've received so far, that we received and the conversations that we've had and through the interview process. And I think we'll be hearing more about that as we move forward.
Okay. So I I I believe some of the select board members might have questions for you or you know, where do we start? I think I think we should consider, you know, this is on the the warrant, and it does imply something further, you know, which is funding to do a renovation of the of the carriage house. So Mike, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Just a quick question. I was at the FinCom meeting last week when you were presenting and just had just was confused by a couple of things and just want to nail them down as we move forward because it seems like with this article that we're kind of really moving in the direction of fully embracing the carriage house as a new construction project and a debt exclusion override before the voters. So and one of the reasons that I understood from when we met a month ago was that this site was really constricted, as you said, Chris, and we couldn't build where we thought we could build. And so the option of any sort of phased construction or anything would would be difficult, if not impossible. I think that's kind of what the message from the project manager was was, you know, was was presenting to us. So so I guess my question is, you know, seems like we've ruled out administration building being at Lynch at any point. And it seems like we are leaning towards using Parkhurst as swing space with which I I know my daughter was there for a couple of years during the V O construction. So and I I know it's 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 improved in a sense, but still, you know, has has some issues as it will for a while. But so I guess I just need a a general sense of we're we're moving in a very specific direction very quickly. And I I didn't know if we were, if there are any other options as far as moving administration somewhere else in the meantime, and then back to Parkhurst or constructing right on the 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 Lynch location while while keeping the building there.
So it I'm happy to jump into that if you'd like and maybe take those in reverse order. We 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 hear literally no interest from the architects interested in the Lynch project to tackle central office on that site. Because it, you know, in some respects, the new Lynch is going to be like building a ship in a bottle. So bringing the central office program into the Lynch project is just going to be building a bigger ship in in the same bottle. So by about nine percent, so nine percent larger, by the way, the we envision the program for the new Lynch is going to be between ten and twelve percent larger than the building that stands there today. That's again, without central office. So imagine for a moment that when Vincent Owen opened in twenty thirteen, that was a school with a design enrollment of four hundred and twenty students. The agreement we have with the MSBA is for a new Lynch to accommodate five hundred and twenty kids, so a hundred more. And in addition to that, an expanded pre-K, twenty percent larger than the one we had until we had to start pulling kids out of the building about three years ago. So it's it's a considerably larger, considerably larger project. So really no interest among the design team to sort of add to the design challenge. Particularly because, you know, I think what we understood, Mike, back in September from Tape A was there's no cost savings in doing that. That was really part of that schematic exercise, if you recall, in the programming exercise. I think if the school committee had heard, you know, the carriage house is going to be two, three, or four times as much money as Lynch. I think we'd all have to kind of put on the brakes and really think about this. But what we hear is that the construction cost option between the two are sort of virtually identical. So that's not, that doesn't really become a decision maker for us. And then with respect to, but then the first part of your question about kind of other options. And you're right, we talked a little bit about this with FinCom the other night. I think it's really important to just be transparent with everybody and say that the school committee, that the district does not have a long-term plan for Parkhurst after the construction of Lynch. That's not a problem. That's not a flaw of the master plan. It's just sort of a reality. Parkhurst has kind of chipped in from time to time as swing space. As you know, it did it for Ambrose. It did it for V O when your daughter was there. And we have at times actually put that building to sleep. I mean, we've put the building in mothballs. That could be a plan. That could be a strategy. The school committee might want to talk about surplusing Parkhurst back to you guys. Maybe Parkhurst has a role to accommodate an expanded rec department or an archival center for Mary Ellen and all manner of, you know, municipal uses. I think one of the things that concerns the school committee, though, is that from our VFA accruent report, we understand we have about fifteen million dollars in renewal and replacement costs at Parkhurst. Because remember, given how we've used that building over time, which is we put it to sleep and kind of bring it back, but just for brief moments, we're not making the kind of investments in that building to really kind of rely on it for the long, long term. So if we were to face a scenario where central office basically had no choice but to So if we were to face a scenario where central office basically had no choice but to remain at Parkhurst for the long term, now we're looking at really substantial investments that we're going to have to make in the building. And one of the other options that we should be talking about is whether, you know, we might want to rent out that building, whether it's to a collaborative, much like we rent the lower level of Mystic, you know, to Kids Corner. There might be revenue generation potential in that building. And some on the panel may remember this better than I, but when I moved to Winchester, the Bartlett School actually called Parkhurst Home, that was a private school, they'd been there for many years, and that was a steady stream of revenue. But we just don't have a real need for it long, long term and at 28,000 square feet. It's so much more space than what we need for central office, which is really closer to 8,000 square feet. The other point I would just make though, Mike, that I think is important is just one about timing and schedule. You're, Susan's right, we're asking for about $57,000 so we can kind of move this football. We have a schematic design that looks like we have a good fit at the carriage house. A lot of assumptions have been made, a lot of allowances have been made to kind of project construction cost and project cost. We would like to take this design one more step, really drill into those allowances, take a mechanical, electrical, plumbing narrative one step further, not only to really confirm that cost, but make every effort to bring it down. Tape can get that work done if it's funded at Fall Town Meeting. They can do that work in December and January. And that's really important because once we kick off the Lynch project, middle of November, we're going to start developing schematic options for the Lynch site, many options. And so really by the end of the winter, like late February, you know, really mid, late February, I think we'll be in a much better position to not only be absolutely certain about what the carriage house will cost, but an even firmer grasp on what that brings in the way of cost avoidance for the Lynch project. We may have Lynch option one, two, three, or four, if we really want to go with option two, but it's going to require some measure of swing space that demands Parkhurst, we need to know that. So I feel like we would really tee ourselves up to have some especially informed conversations and be smart about taking the next step if we fund this at Fall Town Meeting.
And just a quick follow-up, I know Mariano's got his hand raised, but you know, when you say that architects have no interest, you know, it was presented to us last time that we just couldn't really do it there, that the site was so constricted because of the floodplain issues and everything. I just want to make sure that's what we're talking about. It wasn't, it's not just, you know, a preference.
No, absolutely. That's the very reason why we're getting that message, which is this is so challenging as it is, it's going to be just really difficult to get heads around about how we could do this, making the building 9% bigger. So, and of course, yeah, I mean, we've already talked about the cost piece, but I talked a long time. I mean, if Dr. Hackett, you know, wants to add any color to that, maybe he could jump in.
I don't want to take up too much time, but I, can you just, can you rephrase the question, Mike? I'm not sure I understood what you just asked.
Yeah, I mean, I guess when we've been talking about, we'd always discuss the possibility of building the administration office, you know, at Parkhurst along with that and putting together a debt exclusion override as a joint piece. And so it seems like a good option for us. When we last met about a month ago, it was kind of indicated to us that it was really impossible to build this there. And then, you know, Chris said, I was just really clarifying, you know, Chris had said that there was an interest from the architects and I just want to know if it's, if it's kind of difficult or it's impossible or, you know, where we are, because I haven't seen any kind of analysis of the floodplain there. I mean, I certainly, there's a lot of that area is, I just don't know what restrictions are there, what limitations are actually there.
Okay, I mean, I certainly can't speak to the last part, and I think that will continue to come out through feasibility in terms of what the design team looks at, but I want to be careful in saying it was impossible. I think that the points that were made, and I made this point publicly, is that I don't think that a central office should be competing for first ground level instructional space with a school. I think that what we, what we seem to be able to kind of determine at this point in the process is that Lynch will be definitely a multi-story building, two if not potentially three stories. And I just don't think it's fair to the children and to the community of Lynch for us to be a part of that process as a central office, looking for what is prime real estate on that first floor. I think that that would hinder and impact the flexibility that the designers would have in terms of designing Lynch, especially when you think about all the other supporting pieces of that in terms of traffic flow and separate entrances and parking and security. So we, you know, I had requested, I think, I think from my perspective, the vote really was, from the school committee was about deciding to not put it at Lynch irrespective of the carriage house, that trying to combine those spaces really was not going to be in the best interest of the overall project at Lynch.
Thank you.
I think especially if that project is for a building that's larger than, or that is going to be housing 520 students as opposed to the size of, say, VO from 2011, 13.
Okay, yes, that's another very pertinent point.
If I could, I just would add one more piece to this, is that Lynch is also slated to receive six pre-K classrooms. Pre-K has a whole separate infrastructure that goes along with it, we're experiencing that at Parkhurst right now. You know, kids arrive at different points in the day depending on what their program is, parents have drop-off, there already is a, there'll be a competing demand for a whole kind of separate set of needs for the pre-K program, which is much more important in my view, to be located in a new facility at Lynch than it would be for the central office to be there.
Right, thanks. Mariano?
Yeah, thank you, Susan. So I agree that, you know, we shouldn't try to shoehorn the administration into, with the Lynch project, especially given that the cost savings is not significant versus putting it at the carriage house. And really, we need to, we need to focus the Lynch project into providing the best building possible for the Lynch educational community. That, you know, is an amazing community and has been waiting for a new building for a long time, just like the Morocco community has. And I hope we can, we can follow that up as soon as possible. As far as the central office, so my concern is with, if we spend six and a half million, whatever it is, right, around $6 million on the carriage house, and then we say, well, we don't have a plan for what happens to Parkhurst after, after it's used as swing space, right? Could we, what would it cost to, while Parkhurst is being used as swing space, to put the central office in rental commercial space somewhere and then bring the central office back to Parkhurst rather than spend millions of dollars to then end up with a Parkhurst that is empty, right? So that might make more financial sense to temporarily relocate the central office to rental office space if that's available. Now, if you're telling me that, well, I don't want to give you the answer, but you know, I know that you'll tell me if this is the case, but if you're telling me that to bring back the central office back to Parkhurst permanently, right, will cost 12 to 15 million to bring Parkhurst up to, you know, fix the roof or whatever else that needs to happen there, then I can understand that. But is that the case? I mean, are we talking about we have to spend $6 million to put the central office anywhere, anyway? Or is it possible to take the central office temporarily out of Parkhurst while it's being used for swing space and then bring it back?
So here's, I'll try to answer your question maybe with two-part answer. The way I think we're thinking about the carriage house right now is based on the input that came from Hill, which I think we, I think we had shared with you last month, is that if we take, if you get central office out of Parkhurst, first of all, we can do it on a timeline that actually makes that building open and available for the Lynch project, which is kind of the whole point, right? There's, so there's value in that. The OPM is telling us that the value of that swing space, if you didn't otherwise have it, so it could be up to $3 million. So some of us are looking at that and we're saying, so okay, it could be $6 million for the carriage house, but on the other hand, there's an offset, it represents $3 million in cost avoidance, so maybe that's net three.
Well, Chris.
But I just, that's my frame, right?
To me, the cost avoidance is not having to rent swing space for all of Lynch, but the cost avoidance is how much would it cost, and this is, I think, how Town Meeting will see it, how much would it cost to rent commercial space for the central office and free up Parkhurst for swing space, right?
So we did, John Dinesio did some rental, you know, modeling back, we did the master plan, and we could certainly ask him to update that. Now, that was for the long term, you know, that was like 20 years to compare to like a major capital project. But we've got some modeling, we could go back and update on a much shorter timeframe, Mariano, you know, for a couple of years. So you'd have that cost. In terms of getting central office back into Parkhurst though, when we talk about the long haul, so then there's actually, I think, two, there are two big costs to think about. The first is, I assume we all understand and agree that as much as we like Dr. Hackett and the work he's doing here in the first few months, he doesn't deserve an office of 1,000 square feet.
I think deserve is a little strong, but I would agree, the general concept that you're stating, so.
As we shared with FinCom the other night, you know, Parkhurst, it's an elementary school, so we have these massive spaces that are just not really suited for that business use. It's very inefficient. And so one of the questions that came to us from FinCom, I can't remember who asked it, was, you know, what would it take to sort of like renovate a portion of Parkhurst, right? If we know we need, let's say, 8,000 gross square feet and we've got about 28, okay, what if you, what if you kept central office there, but you took kind of the space you really need, which is an interesting idea, but that's a gut renovation. So that's new partitions, new mechanical, new plumbing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, that's at least 250 bucks a square foot. That's on top of those legacy costs, what we call those renewal and replacement costs. Parkhurst is going to need a replacement heating system, it needs new windows, it's going to need a new roof, the masonry chimneys are falling apart, et cetera. So I would say, Mariano, there is a cost to bringing central office back into Parkhurst, I would say, the right way, meaning you actually designed the space that they need, and then you have space left over, which could be for rec, could be for the town clerk, what have you. But there's a significant cost, that is a renovation project. And then on top of that, our VFA database tells us we've got, you're right, it's between 12 and 15 million dollars of costs out there. So if, if we're serious about a long-term play at Parkhurst, you know, where would that money come from? Because capital, and I can, I can say this in the first person because I sit on capital, capital has said, we're not going to entertain any future funding requests for Parkhurst until we know what the long-term plan is. And we just really don't have one. We could certainly get central office into carriage house for a fraction of the price of what it would take to make all the necessary investments at Parkhurst.
So from a qualitative standpoint, Chris, I agree with you, I agree with everything you said, I think, you know, from, you know, from having been in this board and FinCom before, I think, you know, when I was in FinCom, we kept telling school committee to come up with a plan for the carriage house, right? And now you have a plan and we're questioning you about it, right? But that's how, that's how these things work. So, and I agree, I think this is the right plan from a qualitative standpoint, I'd like to see a little bit more quantitative behind it, right? I'd like to see what would be the cost avoidance if we rent it space, what would be the cost of bringing, right? I mean, we're asking for a lot of money for the carriage house, and so it'd be, to me, it would be good to see as, how much would it cost for the other alternatives?
Yeah, I think the rental thing keeps coming up, so it would make sense to do some investigation on that. So Mike, you have your hand up, and then I think we should wrap this up.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. And just a quick, you know, comment here to, you know, we did just add a significant upgrade to Parkhurst with the elevator and renovating some classrooms on the lower level. So, you know, the building is at least moving in the right direction. And as Chris knows, the VFA, which kind of tracks our needed repairs, is, it's generally, from my experience, been kind of an overstatement of what we need. So I don't know if we need 12 to 15 million dollars, you know, right now to make that a functional building or when that would need to happen, but I think that there are a lot of projects that would kind of be phased in over years to really stabilize that building, which we would probably have to do anyway. I don't, you know, we're not at the point where we're ready to kind of forsake, you know, that property. So just that comment there. And I know that we had discussed with the, with Morocco construction, you know, in, maybe in 2028 in that timeline, that maybe the existing Lynch school could be a swing space for that, and that seems like it's off the table too. So we're going to need, you know, the location of having Parkhurst as a swing space for Morocco in the future seems like a really bad option, just, you know, distance-wise. So I, you know, I don't know, Chris, I know you think ahead about all these things, but I don't know if there's anything you've thought there.
It's easy. It, the Morocco project is going to look so easy compared to Lynch. I imagine a future select board meeting where a school committee comes forward and proposes a land swap. We build a new Morocco on Leonard Field, we keep the existing Morocco in place, we don't disturb those kids or that community. And then when you move into a new school, easy access off Washington Street, you tear down the old Morocco and you restore that site to the playfields that Butchy Morocco used to play soccer on before it was built in 1965. I think it's an easy swap, rec space for school, school for rec space, we avoid swing space, and we don't disturb the community, since you asked.
Yeah, no, I did, yeah, for that reason. I knew that that was the answer, but I just, you know, probably it's helpful to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Rich, did you have any questions? You're usually one with questions, so just want to give you a chance.
I know, I'm all set. I think I've asked the questions that I had, so.
All right. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Karen?
Thank you.
Don't forget November 16th.
November 16th.
Be there, be square.
Okay. So that brings us, brings us to going for the warrant articles, which would include the one for the school request. So let me get organized and have that in front of me. Yep, I think this is the list, so.
Hattie, can you pull up the document that Mark sent out?
Thanks, that's a good idea. We could work through that that way. So the first thing is the, is the planning board report. We don't really, you know, it's not a, an action item, but, you know, I think we normally take cognizance that it's, that it's done and that we read it, and it should be added to the records. The next one is the zoning bylaw amendment for the floodplain, which is sort of something we have to do. And the, you know, it's been thoroughly vetted and drafted and the planning board has presented it. So maybe we should go through each, each one of these and vote on each one, what our position is on each one as we go through.
I move that we recommend favorable action on Article 4.
Thank you.
Oh geez, all these roll call votes. Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then the next one is a amendment to the zoning bylaw pertaining to half-stories, kind of complicated, but seems necessary, and it seems that the planning board has really worked on this very thoroughly.
And then I just wanted to mention that Diab is here.
Oh, Diab is still here, okay.
I move that we recommend favorable action on Article 5.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then there's the bylaw change, change to town bylaw to create a master plan implementation committee.
I move that we recommend favorable action on Article 6.
Does anybody have any discussion or thoughts on that? I'm torn about this. I understand the need for a master plan implementation committee. I understand the need for a master plan implementation committee, it just seems like a big cumbersome thing. But I guess we could try it and then if it is too cumbersome to, to have this, this way, we can change it. I know Diab is, is here and has put a lot of work into explaining this and designing this whole thing. So as I said, I'm torn, but I, I see the need for it.
Susan, Mike has his hand raised.
Oh, I see Mike, yep, go ahead.
Thanks, Susan, just wanted to, to comment on this one. You know, I, I, I wish that a article that was about collaboration amongst committees involved any one of these single committees as far as its creation. I mean, this is really a, a lot of what the, or the majority of what the select board does. And, you know, we really weren't included in any of this. I don't think there were any meetings with any of these boards or committees. In fact, I mean, these are, a, a lot of these are appointed committees that, that we appoint to advise us. So I, I don't understand how they're going to then, we're, we're appointing, we're, we're, we're appointing people to then have a separate meeting and then come and, and make recommendations to that committee who's going to make recommendations to town meeting, who are also going to come back and make recommendations to us. I, it, it seems, seems very bizarre. I mean, so I, I think this is not really ready at all for prime time. It's, uh, it seems like one of the issues that we've had lately is recruiting volunteers, but also just being able to schedule meetings. I mean, it's almost impossible. So when you're putting a lot of chairs of committees on other committees, it, it, it just seems like it's going to create a lot of interference and a lot of unnecessary kind of traffic through the, through the system. So I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think what, what I've seen since I've been on the board is that we've been able to work with the planning board and other committees to implement the school master plan, the flood mitigation plan, historic bylaws. I mean, all the things that are in there, we've worked together and really implemented these things. So I, I, I think this is going to actually get in the way of much of what we do, which we need to be pretty nimble about. So I certainly can't support it. But I, I think especially, I think it's, it's strange that none of these committees or nobody was ever met with in order to put this together just kind of fell out of thin air. So I have a lot of concerns. Thanks.
Yep.
I just want to point out one thing that we're not, this is not putting the chairs of the different committees on this other committee. It's putting the chairs, the chairs will appoint the members of the new, of the new, the master plan implementation committee. So it's not like the chairs of the historical commission and the select board will be on the master plan implementation committee, but they will be the ones who appoint, just like FinCom is appointed by the chairs of the select board, the moderator and the chair of FinCom.
That's true. And to be, you know, totally transparent, I did have, I was invited to a short meeting earlier in the, in the year with, with Brian, it's a Kelly, and Diab to talk about how there should be a master plan implementation committee. I tried to make the case that a lot of what we're, the select board is already doing comes from or is consistent with the master plan, but same with a lot of other committees. And that, you know, I didn't want, I was trying to make, make the case also that the implementation committee should maybe focus on a few of the goals rather than the entire master plan, at least, you know, near one of the implementation committee. But we just didn't, we didn't see the eye to eye on that approach. And, and planning board had to go ahead and do this. Because, you know, a, as Diab pointed out, with each year that goes by, you know, we sort of run the risk of getting to the point where the master plan is kind of on the back burner and, or on the shelf and it isn't really being implemented at all. But we, we're not there yet and, and we certainly are implementing a lot of what is in the, the master plan, which is really heartening and, and good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my point is that the chairs of these boards are going to have to be communicating with this representative who's meeting with another representative. So we're creating a lot of different layers of, for advisory committees, which are, which are there just to advise the select board on certain things that we created, climate action committee, the traffic and transportation advisory committee. So it seems, it, it seems like there's a lot of conflict and, and it seeks really, you know, from my perspective, just to dilute the leadership of the, the select board. I mean, we, we're, for things that we're supposed to have authority or policy authority, we're, we're really with a bunch of other, we're at the same level with people, with groups that we appoint and creating this committee for things that we're supposed to be doing. So I, I, I don't know, it seems very bizarre. I don't know if, if town council has, has reviewed it and has any, you know, comments. I mean, I certainly will say that there's nothing like this in, in any other communities that, in Massachusetts. So it, it's, and I think one of the things for, for a small community, we've been very effective and achieved a, a lot with a little. So anyway, I don't know, Mina, if you have any, any comments on it.
Glad you're still here, Mina, yes.
It's, it's one of the reasons I'm still here, just to look at, as you talk through the town meeting motions. I mean, I, I think Mike's points are actually well-taken. I, I have, a lot of these are policy questions, but I have concerns, I guess I, I would just say, from our experience, where, where conflicts do arise in municipal government, it's almost always when there's not clarity about who's doing what and where jurisdictions overlap. And sometimes that's inevitable, but I, my worry here is there's a, a, a lot of, I, I think it's all advisory, but it's not exactly clear where it starts and ends on the roles. And I just think there needs to be, I, I would, I would advocate for greater clarity around that as a starting point, because I think it, it raises questions of, you know, who's the advice going to? Who's it, is it being funneled through anybody? What's the staff report look like, certainly for that, the, all those kinds of things. I would also add just a small practical piece, although I think there were efforts, I'm not sure if they revised, if, if there were, there may be any revisions going to this. It's also a lot of committee members to be selected through joint meetings. I think within 30 days, if I recall correctly, after town meeting, all of those joint meetings are going to have to be publicly noticed and so on. So just even a small logistical piece, it, it certainly could be difficult. And then I think if you look towards the end, the concern which we, which I did share at the planning board chair's request to sort of explain our thoughts on it to Mark, Too Good and I, you know, explain some of, some of this. I believe, you know, there's a seek, language about seeking funding from governmental, non-governmental entities as one of the roles. I, I, I take that to mean that sort of it's, it's to sort of locate or identify sources of funding, because ultimately town meeting would have to do that. But again, it's not clear what separate advisory committee would do with that as opposed to the town manager's office, planning department, et cetera. So I, I, I do have some legal concerns. I can't put a finger on it to say this is, you know, illegal to do this, but I, it, it is, it has the kind of vagueness that I worry could lead to lots of questions to us or, or the town manager about who's responsible for what. And that, that is something I would suggest, I would just recommend clearing up if you're going to have a committee like this.
Thank you, yes.
So I made a motion, I, I hope it's seconded, we, we have to take a vote, whether it's, you know, I, usually we recommend favorable action and then we take a vote, even if we recommend no, right? We take the no vote, but that, that's been our practice in the past. So hopefully somebody will second my motion to recommend favorable action in Article Six. Otherwise, we have nothing to recommend to town meeting when they ask us.
Yes, I know, well.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to follow along with that, so I'll second your motion, Mariano.
Okay.
Well, I guess we had discussion, any other further discussion?
No, I mean, I'll just add, Mike, that, you know, I, I appreciate Mina's feedback. Kind of my concerns as well, I appreciate Mike's articulation of his concerns. You know, I, I think I share Mina's concerns, I'm looking at this and I've read it several times now. I just, I just don't understand what, they keep referring to the parties and I don't know what that refers to. And I just think it creates a tremendous bureaucracy that, you know, I'm just, I think it's a hard time for people to follow what we're doing to begin with and I just think this is going to slow down things and add confusion. I'm all for a master plan steering committee, but I think this is overreaching in my respect.
Susan, can I, Diab is, is, has his hand raised?
Oh, is, is that, see, I don't have that in front of me right at the moment, so yes, he does have his hand raised, all right.
I think maybe he can answer any, any questions, maybe.
We should let Diab speak. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm going to have to stop sharing so I can let him in.
Yeah, that's fine. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, thanks for letting me in.
Thank you for joining us. And I apologize for not calling on you sooner, go ahead.
It's okay, eventually I got in. So a lot of issues have been raised and I don't know that I can address all of them because I don't recall all of them, I can try to go backwards. There are certainly, I had a very fruitful discussion with Mina and Mark Too Good about the, several of the issues. One of them was the concept of what funding actually meant. And the language, I hope, will be clarified so that we are looking at identi- the, the idea would be that this committee would help identify funding that could be of use to other. When I use the word entities or bodies, those are town governmental entities. We have boards, we have commissions, we have committees. So I don't know what the correct legal term is to encompass all of those. So that's why the word body was used. There may be an occasion where this committee would require funds of its own. As with all committees, all funding requests would have to go through the town. And in particular, it would be staffed by the town planner. And the town planner would be the one who would make the submission to the town manager for funds or for grant rather. So that is not something I think that's any different than what's exact, actually existing at present. So there is, I believe, a clear line of financial and fiscal responsibility which runs through the town planner. One of the other questions was authority. This is an advisory committee. I, I don't see that it has, it dilutes the authority of anybody, no more than the fact that the FinCom is also an advisory committee. Does it dilute the, I mean, certainly the FinCom has a much greater impact on the workings of the select board than this committee might. So I, I, I understand there's concern about overlapping of authorities, but since this is an advisory committee, I don't see that, I don't know how that would translate into an actual loss of authority by the select board. The select board is still making the decisions on the things that they are entitled to make decisions on. They can take this advice or not take this advice as they do with any of the other advisory committee. The reason why it is a little complicated in terms of its selection process is because the master plan doesn't encompass many different parts of town. It encompasses things that are not controlled by the select board or the planning boards. For instance, the, the Board of Health has things that this master plan works with. So having all of those different entities have a seat at the table in terms of deciding who is on the master plan implementation committee seems like the most democratic, excuse me, way of doing this. I can't talk to whether or not you would actually have open meeting law requirements since the selection committees are chosen as a single member from each of those committees. Now, I don't know, for instance, when FinCom, the selection committee from FinCom gets together, does that require a notice, a, a advanced notification? I mean, this committee is using the same procedure as any other standing town committee. So unless there's something different about this, I don't see that it is any more or less onerous than the other committees. As to whether or not the town needs a master plan implementation committee, which I think is, several comments have made that we are doing fine without one. And, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, we spent, we, we went 65 years without a new master plan. There have certainly been a lot of efforts on the part of all of the boards to move us forward, but not in response to what the state requires in the sense that we are required to have a comprehensive master plan. And so I think each of the boards has moved forward as they can, but that isn't a substitute for getting together and trying to bring in some of the other sections of town government and the town community, which don't ordinarily have a voice. And one of the reasons we decided to go with this committee is that it is an overwhelming task for any one committee to, that is, you know, either the planning board or the select board or any other of the full-time boards, to manage this, to create the synergies between the different parts of town government and the non-governmental organizations that are required. So for instance, you know, does, does this door commission? I mean, it would be great if they could get together with climate action, talk about the embodied energy and why that is one important reason we shouldn't have home demolishments or demolitions. I mean, there are so many different connections that could be made between the various parts of government that I think we don't have, in part because we are siloed, not necessarily by choice, but by the lack of time and resources. And I think that there is, we saw, when we reached out to the community to create the master plan, we had a thousand people respond to our survey. That's really unheard of in terms of other communities' experience. We have a very interested community. And I think we will get a, a incredibly talented pool of people who are willing to work on the master plan. So I don't have any fears about finding volunteers for this. I think we will have, I mean, look at the, the quality of the people who came out for climate action. So I, I, I'm sorry, I've gone on a bit longer, I'm passionate about this. I think that if there are specific problems that could lead to a, their proposal, I would, I, I'm all, it's difficult to understand what corrections can be made when there are vague statements of amnise. And I don't mean that as a prerogative, as a, as a, as a negative way. It's just that if there are specific concerns that we can adjust things on, then that's something I can work with. So anyway, I, I'm going to stop, I know Mike has his hand up.
Yeah, Mike, you do have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Susan, thank you, Diab. But I, I mean, I guess, as I said at the outset, it seems like a committee that's supposed to be centered on collaboration, you know, didn't really include us at all or any of the boards or committees that are, you know, really engaged in this process. So, I mean, that concerns me. I think even the timing of all this is really confusing. So there's one person where it's, one seat is expiring every year, it's being appointed after fall town meeting. And is that, is that not correct or?
That is, there, it is like all boards, which begin, in order to get a, a succession, you have to have, over the first several years of the board, you cannot have everyone be a full member or you will be unable to get the, the progression that you need where you only have a certain number leave every year. where you only have a certain number leave every year. So the first three years are a building period for the board. And after three years, everyone is now, all of the successions are in order. And normally you don't see that because you don't, you know, the boards have been there forever. So for instance.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, so that's why there's a complicated. So there is an issue with um, fall town meeting. Um, we actually copied the exact same language from the other um, standing committees, which talk about thirty days after, in their case, spring town meeting. But since we're bringing this forward at fall town meeting, it just changed to fall. I had a long discussion with Mary Ellen and she she brought home the reality of the um, ability of the town clerk to do things after fall town meeting. And so I think it does make sense to move it after spring town meeting and um, lengthening it to more than thirty days would probably be appropriate. I think that's an easy amendment to make. But in terms of that part, it's it it falls in line with where the other boards are done, with all the other standing committees, the town meeting are done.
So Diab, do you do you think you and Mina could um, could meet and um, hammer out some changes?
Well, I think, I think there's a, you know, if it's the feeling of the select board that this is in essence invading their turf, then I don't know what sort of changes to this. I mean, to get really down to the nitty gritty is if the select board feels that this is in some way um, diluting their authority, then I I don't know, you know, if this committee were simply taken under the the wings of the planning board, it would perform the exact same certain um. Excuse me. It would perform essentially the exact same tasks. Also report through the planning board or on its own to town meeting. So the the actions of this committee are independent, in a sense, of which body it's attached to. So if the concern with the select board is about whether it dilutes its authority, then that strikes at the very heart of what the master plan implementation committee is there to do. Which, so I don't know how to resolve that issue.
So, uh, that's, I'm, I don't, I don't see, well, I don't have that concern. Uh, my concern is um, having appointing, uh, appointed bodies appointing other people. Um, so I think maybe, you know, making it a lot simpler where the chair of the select board, the chair of the planning board and the moderator, uh, appoint everybody might make sense. And also bringing it back at spring town meeting with the, all the legal things clarified. And then that way, everybody gets appointed after spring town meeting. That would be, tho- that those would be two of my pieces of feedback, if you would be open to those.
I am certainly open to them. I I. The, my only concern again is buy-in requires people think they have a voice and selection on this committee. And I I, I would like the selection to be open to a wider set of of people than just that. So for instance, the Council on Aging is, I think, a very important voice in town, which is not often heard from at the at these higher levels. And I think they should be part of that decision about that selection. Disability Access as well is is a, is a voice which is just underheard and raising, making, you know. So my, I understand what, you want to simplify it, but I want to make sure we don't leave out some of those voices that are, that are normally not heard. And maybe there's a, maybe there's a way around that. I I don't, you know, I I I don't know. If if you trust the people that you appoint and other committees, then presumably you trust them to appoint other people. I'd, I I guess I, perhaps it needs to be explained to me in a different sense. I'm certainly open to discuss it.
Usually when we have other committees appoint somebody, is we have other committees appoint a member of their committee to be a representative to some other committee, right? But when we have, when we have somebody appointing somebody else, so appointing somebody from outside that committee, it's usually an elected board that makes that appointment and not an appointed board or an appointed committee that makes an appointment of somebody outside. Like if you told me one representative from Disability Action, one representative from Council on Aging, that would be different than having Council on Aging have an appointing power when that's a committee that's appointed by somebody else. That's.
Okay, um, so I I I. What what I have seen on, um, well, okay, I understand that. Um, the reason for not going that route was because we wanted to ensure that members of the community would have a presence on the board who did not necessarily have to be part of an existing body. And so that's, that's why we went that route. Um, if we were to go with the route of having someone from the board appear on there, I think that would be overwhelming, um, just from my experience for that board, for the, for the board that's going to appoint someone. Uh, Housing Partnership Board, which I've been on for almost six years now, Council on Aging has has found it difficult at times to provide a representative to that board. And I think asking members of other boards to appear on yet another board would be unfair and just unmanageable. So I I I understand your point. Um, I.
I I understand. At the same time, I think we're gonna have a hard time finding ten people that are not on other boards. I mean, we can, we can't even fill the boards that we already have right now, like the zoning board of appeals.
I I think there's a difference between a board with, so ZBA is difficult because they have um, legis- legal authority and it is an incredibly difficult thing. Um, I don't think you had any problem, for instance, fi- filling the council, the the um, Climate Action. You had people you had to turn away. So I think, I think there's a difference between volunteer boards, which are seen as being part of a legislative function. So I I I, so there's.
Yeah.
Uh, so what I hear from you, and I think the key takeaway here is that you're concerned about the the line of um, authority as to how the person gets appointed, that it should be much more directly appointed by members of elected bodies. And so that is, that's a key takeaway. Trying to, it would, if that were the case, would that solve some of the concerns about um, authority and overlapping?
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any issues with authority and overlapping, uh, as long as legal has uh, cleaned up some of the, um, you know, ambiguity uh, language. But otherwise, I don't have any concerns about, you know, the separation of powers or anything like that, so.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to work with Mina. We have a planning board meeting tomorrow. Um, I can bring up all of these issues with them. Again, I think Mike has his hand up.
Yes, I see that. Thank you, Diab.
Oh.
One more comment, then I I think we need to wrap this up.
Yeah, um, thanks, um, Susan and and Diab. Yeah, and and just, you know, another issue with the, as I understand it, it's, um, the committee is reporting to the, the planning board essentially, right? So it's the, it's the planner that's kind of managing this, so which is, is that not correct? Um, so who who is the, who is involved with um, this committee and organizing it?
Yeah, who was the staff? Yeah.
The the, the committee reports to town meeting as a standing committee of town meeting. That's the only one that it actually has to report to. Now, we have put in, and Susan pointed out in the discussion, that we had requested um, intermediate reports to the planning board. And this is mostly to do with the reporting on when the planning board, the the master plan is supposed to be updated, maybe not continuously, but every few years on the order of three years. And so having that feedback to the planning board is important. The town planner would be on the committee in order to provide definitely knowledge and continuity, but they would not, he would be a staff person. They would not be reporting to him. Um, one of the problems that happens, and especially as a part in the planning board, is when you go through elections or people step down, you end up with a dramatic loss of knowledge. So for instance, I'm the only person left on the planning board from when the master plan was done and approved. And so when I step down, the person who will have that knowledge will be the town planner. And it made sense to provide continuity to the town planner. But in terms of who this board answers to, it very emphatically answers to town meeting. And that was specifically done so that this board was not seen, hopefully would not be seen as a tool of the planning board. There have been concerns expressed to me that the planning board, that the master plan is um, a lever that could be used by the planning board. And I I really, for me, the most important part is for the, for the vision of the master plan to be accomplished. I really don't care if it's the planning board which has responsibility for it. I want it to be done. And if this is set up so that it's, it's associated with the body which is less politically vulnerable, then that's great. So.
Okay.
That's, I, that's it, sorry.
Yeah, so, uh, I, one last comment. Please make it, if we can, make it an odd number of members. That way it's easier for them to to get a quorum. Um, and if they, if the planning board is going to have a meeting tomorrow and they might revise it, Susan, if we might not take a vote tonight and instead see the revised motion next week and take a vote before town meeting, I would suggest that.
I I I, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, if I could just point out, I do have to get together with legal to determine how much we can change the wording. So some of it may have to be made as an amendment on the floor of town meeting, so.
And just a question too, Diab. I mean, who who drafted this? Because I mean, it seems like it didn't come from Mina, so um, or Town Council, so who?
It came from the planning board.
So the, the members of the planning board drafted this article?
This, the final, the final, I put words to paper based upon three months of discussions. This was circulated with all of the rest of the, this has gone through legal. Uh, I don't know what sort of, it was submitted with all of the other ones, so um.
Okay.
That's what I know.
Okay.
I just, I just want to add, you know, Diab, I know you have a lot on your plate with the planning board. I just don't, I don't want to see this rushed. Um, in in my opinion, this is my personal opinion, I think it needs a lot of work. Um, and I'm not sure, you know, at this eleventh hour, can you get done for this fall town meeting? So I don't, I don't want to get your hopes up, you know, that, at at least in my mind, that I'm gonna change my mind, you know, and and, you know, with eleventh hour edits to this. I think it frankly should be pulled and 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 maybe brought back in the spring um, after some collaboration with other boards and 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 thought out a little further. I think we've had some good discussion tonight. I just think it's a little late.
Uh, Susan, can I just?
Yeah, what, go ahead and then.
Sorry, just one thing. Um, I I'm happy to to look at another draft. And I I do want to just note that there, the question of how much can be changed to, is less so about between now and town meeting versus at town meeting, although procedurally that's an issue. There's a scope issue generally too. And um, how much you can change an article from what's intended in the scope or not. Um, this was a very detailed proposal, so.
Yeah.
I I don't want to rule anything. I, it's not actually my role to rule something in or out. That's the moderator. But it is a question that comes up, especially for a com- complex article as as this one. Uh, I'm, you know, whatever the board, the select board um, sort of wants me to do as as you see more drafts, I'm happy to to look at it, but that that is an issue that just in terms of timing, you all should be thinking about too.
Well, I mean.
This is a general bylaw too, right? So it's the, I mean, the the wording and the language, it it really matters.
Right, right. Yeah, it'll be on the books and it'll go through the AG's approval. Um, not, not, they don't usually, I can't see anything in here that the AG would have questions about other than suggesting consultation, you know, cause something about sort of where things fit.
Well, I want to do the right thing and given the lateness of the hour, literally, um, let's give it one more go around, you know, um, set of changes and and bring it back. And and, you know, and then we'll decide, you know, I don't know if we want to support it. I don't know, I don't know how it's all gonna come out, um, but we need to move on tonight. So thank you, Diab.
I appreciate you, uh, taking up the discussion. Thanks.
Yep. So we're gonna put that one off until um, before town meeting. Um, which is not that long, oh, not that far away. Um, so the next one, we have a few that we have already handled. And then we have the Capital Planning Board, uh, Capital Planning Committee Report, which again is just, is a report. And then the Capital Account Closeouts, which is also um, on the consent agenda. I I I don't see, see why we wouldn't um, take a position on that just in case, so.
Um, Susan, if I may, I'm just gonna read out all the ones that I think are going to be non-controversial.
Okay, fine.
If anybody has a problem with it, just pull it out. But I move that we recommend favorable action on Articles eleven, twelve, thirteen, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-seven, and that's it.
Twenty-two. Oh, yep, and then, okay, and twenty-seven. Yep, okay. Is there a second? Maybe I should just, I wish you had read the the names of those. Um.
I can, I can read them, so.
Yeah, please do.
Uh, recommend favorable action on Article eleven, Capital Account Closeouts. Article twelve, Capital Projects Appropriations. Article thirteen, for the South Reservoir Dam. Article sixteen, the PEG Axis and Cable Related Fund, which is part of the consent agenda. Article seventeen, FY twenty-two Budget Supplemental Reduction, also part of the consent agenda. Article eighteen, FY twenty-two Water and Sewer Supplemental Reduction, also part of the consent agenda. Article twenty-two, appropriation for uh, prior year bills, consent agenda. And Article twenty-seven, appropriation for Maintenance of Flood Mitigation Project.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for doing that, Mariano. Um, that leaves us with.
I think it's just Article twenty-eight and thirty left.
So thirty, we don't have, there's no.
All right.
There's no report or motions yet, right? So I think it's only twenty-eight, the.
Yep, it's only twenty-eight.
Central office.
Any discussion? Any thoughts? I think we heard pretty clearly from the school folks.
My only question is if everybody's ready to vote on it, or if this is something we want to wait until we get any more data from the school committee?
Yeah, I'd rather have some more information and vote once we get some in hands. Um, I I know that the FinCom had requested some information as well, so, yeah.
That that would be my view. It's not gonna come up next week anyway, right? Because it's not, it's Article twenty-eight, so.
That, yeah, that's, that's had crossed my mind as well. All right, so it's only um, twenty-eight and six that we're looking at deferring. Okay. Do we want, do you want to, well, Personnel Board, that's right, we're waiting on that one too. Okay.
So I move that we approve the request from Hope Christian Church to use the town parking lot uh, from twelve to seven PM on Sunday, February sixth, twenty twenty-two for their Night to Shine Prom Night as a drive-through event for people with special needs.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Sorry that this went so late. Beth, Patty, have I left anything out?
Because it was. I know that I didn't have anything.
Okay.
How did you have anything?
Okay.
Nope, everything's done.
Thank you all. Yes, was there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Patty, Beth, Mina, everybody else. Thank you, Patty, Beth, Mina, everybody else.